Peter Humphreys, Mount Binkie Road. How do I follow that up? I do have a simple statement to Todd. The fire in Redstone that we heard from Mr. Tour about is going to destroy our downtown. We're adding 800 rooms and it's going to wreck us. It will only wreck the resort that he'll let it wreck. If you have a superior product, you're at Disneyland and you're worried about the guy building four rooms across the road. Yes, can you build 800 rooms across from Disneyland? Yes, but only if you'll let him. Only if you'll let him in your business plan. If you don't develop the hotels, you don't have the customer service. You're going to open the gate to David Evans to build 800 rooms. Do I think he will? No, I don't think there's demand for that. But I don't think it's any of us to say David Evans can't build 800 rooms. If he builds 800 rooms, you put a better product on the hill, he'll fail. But that's up to him to fail. We can't say you can or cannot fail. A couple other points on that. More of a technical part of it. I think the best use of that land is for higher density. We have limited value to build things on. Should we put single-family homes on that piece of property? No. Should we put a pig farm on it? No. It's beside the resort. It should be higher density. It should be related to the resort. The other thing I heard was talking about the legal agreements. I was a contract administrator for the city of Galway. When we negotiated things, you put everything down in your legal agreement. Everybody agreed with it. At the end of the day, everybody signed it. There wasn't this, ah, yeah, we won't put that in writing. We're going to worry about that later. Trust me on that one. It's a legal agreement. We go by the legal agreement. Legal agreements are there for future dispute resolution. If it's not on paper, it's not there. What I heard earlier from a presentation, we could have put a buffer around the ski resort. But we decided to do it differently. And everybody signed off on that. There is no buffer. There is a border around the development. And how you decide, if you didn't put a buffer, then if you decide Mr. Evans can't develop there, then you're setting a precedence. You're putting a buffer in when there was no buffer deciding on that. You're saying you can't develop within two kilometers of that. Or are you saying you can't develop within 10 kilometers of that? What are you saying as a precedence if you turn this in? Thanks.
Jeff Nicholson didn't really indicate, but he's next on the list if he wishes to speak.
I actually thought I signed a list of attendees who were speaking, but whoever's sitting there. I'd just like to say that I very much agree with all of the evidence that Don has supported by RMR. And I really think that the future of the town depends on what, you know, they're... I believe they were right when they talked about the possible danger to the future of the town. They probably had this kind of sort of the off-the-wall development idea. So, thank you.
Fraser Blyth.
Hi. Good evening, your worship. And I'm as a council. My name's Fraser Blyth. I live at 811 Bruce Street West. And I'm a planner designer here in Revelstoke. I'd like to say it's great to see everyone out at this event tonight. And I appreciate all the feedback we've gotten on this project so far. As you know, I've been working with David on this application since January. And tonight, as a citizen, as a planner, I'm here to ask you to support this application. The main question before you tonight is whether or not this is the best use of this property next at Revelstoke Mountain Resort. And here's why it will be beneficial to the resort and to the community. First off, this will be an attractive, unique accommodation area that is offering something different from the resort. It will provide native accommodation units that act as a regional tourism town. Mosi Bench has considered the context and been designed to be of a size that is complimentary and mutually beneficial to the resort. It is bordered within the city of Revelstoke by the RMR's CD08 Resort Core Zoning, which is different from the resort neighborhood zoning, which is also kind of CD08. Matching an accommodation area with the resort core zoning is far more appropriate and complimentary than having it next to the neighborhood. The neighborhood zoning. The main idea that this would be competition to RMR is based on the idea that this will be another village. And this simply is not the case. This is, as mentioned, 18 acres of sloped land, not all of which is developable. There are only three permitted principal uses in this zone, all of which allow for accommodation. The zone does not offer the number and variety of uses that RMR's permitted in the adjacent resort core zoning. There is no housing permitted. There is no direct route to access permitted in this zone. And I fail to see how without route to access, housing, and other related uses, this could ever be considered another village. The proposed building images we produced in preparation for the open house and as part of this application were designed to show that this could not be anything but a unique accommodation area. Again, given the topographical constraints and the challenges David would have in creating a treehouse hotel by removing all the trees and creating a village, it's not really feasible. Again, this will not be a massive village development. And looking at the proposed land use and zoning, Mosi Bench is a lower intensity use than that of the resort core zoning next to the property. This lower intensity use is an appropriate transition zone between the resort and surrounding rural residential building of the CSRD. This means that rather than having a resort core zoning above CSRD's rural residential area, we now have an accommodation area that is integrated within its context. This is especially true given the nature of the accommodation area with tree retention at high priority and building heights that are considerate of the canopy height to help visually plot out a rural area from the resort core. When looking at compliance with our official community plan, it's important to recognize that this is changing the fundamentals of our OCP. It is a legal requirement upon annexation that the annexed property be integrated into the OCP. Compared to this, the Revelstoke Mountain Resort Official Community Plan found within our OCP says, "The OCP recognizes that the city may have to deal with subsequent additions and amendments, notably the expansion of resort land areas and the incorporation of development permanent areas." It also says, "Further official community plan amendments may be considered by the city from time to time to clarify or supplement the objectives already within the OCP and to address further other issues that arise during the period of buildup of the resort." And finally, this OCP also says, "The city may consider the positive and negative impacts that servicing and zoning may have on any affected lands that are not now part of the resort, yet are included in the resort area." And that's essentially what we are doing here tonight. Also, as part of this application, it underwent a thorough review by city staff to ensure that the zoning fits within the policies and goals of the OCP. Had it not been consistent with the OCP goals and policies, it wouldn't have proceeded to this public hearing. When looking at compatible land uses, you start first with the city of Revelstoke's land use map. Land use indicates intent for desired use. And as a rule of sound planning, you don't want to have a parcel of land that is an isolated pocket but with different land use. You wouldn't want to have a small industrial property that was surrounded only by iron ore as a reserve. This goes against the logical comprehensive plan. The land use around this property within the city is dedicated as resort lands. So in order to avoid this particular parcel being something that doesn't work with whatever else is around it, this parcel should logically fit within that resort use. This is further supported by the fact this property was originally included in the Resort Master Development Plan. Had this been an unsuitable property for resort use, it wouldn't have been included in that plan. Finally, I just want to finish and say a couple things. One is that I honestly don't believe that David would be putting this application forward if he believed it would have a negative effect on the resort and the community. He's got too much at stake. He's invested a lot in this community already. And to see the resort suffer and the community suffer would be to see his own investment suffer. David's vision for this property has always been to build a unique accommodation area that would offer something completely different, innovative, and fun. This application is consistent with Revelstoke's OCP and represents a logical land use that considers the surrounding zoning and uses that will bring more visitors to RMR and Revelstoke. I would love to stay in a place like this. Where else would you see you could go and stay in a place like this? I know this is something that will attract many new and return visitors, complement the resort, and be something that Revelstoke is really proud to have. Thank you.
Jean-Marc Alflan.
Hello, my friends. My name is Jean-Marc Alflan. I live down on Highway 2377. And I work downtown, right across from Youfind Folk and Mountain Collab. The president of Mountain Collab, we're a co-working innovation center. And we are doing wonderful things for ourselves as part of the newer economy. And we're also creating some wonderful initiatives at the Collab. And there's a few things that I wanted to touch on coming out of this collaboration, which is most important. We need to kind of come together and understand what is truly innovative and important for our community. And you guys, representatives, are there to decide on that based on the collaboration with the community. And I think you've gotten a lot of information over the past weeks and months about what the community may like at this point in time. All due respect to the master development agreement and the OCP, of which we have some fine people that are representing this. But you guys are the masters of understanding what our community needs now. And I think above all, we need to figure out exactly where we're going to go in the near future. If anybody knows me, I definitely have a little bit of a future forecasting and understanding where we could be going with the resort, where lift technology is going, where transportation technology is going. The one thing that's paramount here is that we continue to experiment. We absolutely, it's critical that we continue to experiment on new development and new building and new people with wonderful passion, desires, and experience behind them. It's critical, okay? These people are not parasites. They're our family. And when we go up to the church in the mountains, that's our church, by the way. It's not just a business. All due respect to the wonderful business that's been kept sustainable. It's been kept sustained by Mark initially and the Galaris and the entire team, the wonderful team at Revelstoke Mountain Resort. But we do need competition, as Todd and Peter said. And we do need to be innovative. And we do need to experiment. And we do need to allow certain people to step up and realize that we can actually be trustworthy of a new family member, of an old family member. We come together at Church of the Mountains, we discuss this, and we find out where the truth lies. It lies within us. We're a big family. We can collaborate on this. We've got to support the Treehouse Hotel and all sorts of wonderful initiatives that are going, that are going to be coming upon us and move forward. Thank you very much.
Steve Kent.
Hi. I'm Steve Kent. I live at 609 Seventh Streets East. I'm a small local contractor in town here. I'm not the only one. I'd like to start off by thanking the here at council for the work that they do and to let you know that I appreciate that and respect the citizens that you make. And although I'm like Fred only speak since 1962, I do have a piece. And that is that the Treehouse Hotel, I think is a fantastic idea. And I think it will be a welcome addition to our community and also to the resort. The argument that I keep hearing about the 800 rooms or four hotels or whatever could be built at the ski hill, I think is, as Fraser said, at best spurious. It's not what the proponent has asked for, nor is it what the city is allowing. So I don't think that that's a reasonable argument at all. And I think also that RMR's talk of the 800 beds effectively affecting their operation is bunk. Because I think that David and Shelley would have four hotels on that property around the same time and there are 24 beds on the mountain. And that won't happen any time soon. Thank you.
Matt Singh.
Hi. My name is Matt Singh. I live at 38 Hertz Drive. I was a city councillor from 1998 to 2007, three terms. I was there for all the negotiations that brought this ski hill to fruition. I brought the reports with me, the 1998 resort expansion report.
Matt, can you just get a little closer, please?
The 1998 resort expansion report, 2003 master development plans, one and two. I brought them weekly. I love them more than a car because they're big and heavy and hard to carry. I feel the spirit of those agreements and plans was that whatever entity that built the ski hill infrastructure would have the benefit from the commercial real estate associated with the hill. The developer would have exclusive rights to build a commercial village area. That was my understanding of how they would pay for that infrastructure. That was the carrot used to invite, to entice an investment group to build a hill. And that's what I voted for. As far as I'm concerned, a deal's a deal. There were no other groups of investors lined up to invest in the hill. For all the years that I was on council, we tried and tried to get this hill going. We spent countless hours working on this as a group. We had consultants advise us on the pitfalls that face resort communities and the financial barriers ski hills face. We should remember that many ski hills in Canada have gone bankrupt over the years. And if the Galaris had not stepped up to the plate in 2008, and all likelihood, we would have had another bankruptcy. There was no gray area as to where this commercial real estate benefit ended in my mind. There was no other commercial zoning in Arakas that made that issue simple. To me, it's black and white. We wanted a ski hill, we sold them the land, and told them that they'd benefit from commercial real estate in exchange for building it. Simple as that. Thank you.
Lon Parker.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Okay. Hi, I'm Lon Parker. Thank you for having me. And for mine, it's all the same. I just wanted to say a few things, a couple of points of clarification. I went through the documentation. There were some statements in the letter to council that are not correct. And in the letter to council that was dated mainly 25th, 2016, it states that the zoning is consistent with the rezoning, is consistent with the OCP. The section that is referred to to allow the upper bench area to transform and be consistent with the development guidelines, that is in our OCP, but the intent of that was that if that area on the bench was to be developed, that the resort would already be further developed and it did. And it's like you said earlier, and others have said earlier, the development of the resort really is in its infancy. So to state that the OCP, our OCP, is supporting our visitor's time is incorrect. That was not the intent. He also stated in the letter that the primary intent was to build accommodation pods served by a single lodge. And maybe that's the intent. But at the time that the application went forward for annexation from the regional district into the city, that was the only intent. And I believe that it's a little disingenuous to say that this is what you want to do with that property, have a nice boutique hotel, and then come forward and request a comprehensive development zone to the scale of development that is in that zone. That, in effect, if you did build out to that, and you have the zone, you have the right to do that, would, in effect, give another little village home alongside the resort. And that was not the intent of the master development agreement. I was in the community at the time, I was elected representative. And at the time that we had the discussions in the community, community members put a lot of hours, they went to a lot of meetings, they poured their hearts out to mayor and council, to the province, to get the thing right. And we need to keep it, we need to keep moving forward and do it the right way. The other thing he stated in this letter was that the annexation of this particular property was supported by the CSRD. And that is not correct. The CSRD does not support, never did support, having piecemeal annexations of properties into the city. We have always stated that we would need to have a comprehensive boundary expansion discussion in the community so that we could see where development should take place and when it should take place. Currently, we're in the process where we're looking to work together, where we are working together with the city and the province to go forward with that process, to have that dialogue. And I think that to help the dialogue to happen, and quite frankly, I think if the comprehensive development zone had been put into that original annexation request to the city and that had been referred to the province and to the regional district, only shoot up regional district, this application may not have even taken place. So I just wanted to clear that up. So when we're going through this study, we will be gathering information in the city and in the regional district when we move forward to see where development should take place and where does it make sense to take place. This is really important planning. And if you have the plan for now, but you also have the plan in the future. That's what we did when we did the master development agreement and the planning in the community. We looked at how a 20-year buildout. And we put statements in our OCP that would allow those things to change and to grow. Hence, the statement from our CSRD OCP that that upper bench area would most likely would be developed and fit to the resort. Planning is really, it's really important. And I don't think there's been enough planning here. This has been a request that has gone to the city. The annexation has taken place. And so now you're faced with what may be a decision on whether you should allow this comprehensive development zone, when it's only asked for this boutique tree hotel. I don't think anyone is against the boutique tree hotel. But what they are against is the arrogance having a decision made with such great proportions that will have such a profound effect on the Revelstoke Mountain Resort, on the downtown of the city of Revelstoke. And I think it needs to take some very serious consideration. I would ask council not to proceed with a comprehensive development zone for this property at this time.
Paul Norrie.
Mayor, council, thanks for having us. Thanks for having me. I live at 1071 Gardi Press, I'm the mayor of Wrights. And to start off, I have no affiliations. I don't work with the resort. I don't work with Mr. Evans. In fact, technically, I'd be a competitor of the resort. I'm president and CEO of Mike and Alice's. So my boss is probably looking at me saying, what are you doing? But in this case, I'm going to stand up and I support the resort's perspective. I believe in competition. I believe in adding paint to walls and new equipment when you need to keep up with the Joneses and stay ahead of that. But in this case, I feel this is fundamentally different than any other development. A treehouse, boutique hotel, 80, 90, 100 rooms, I'll admit, I like it. I think it's a great use of the land. I think it fits with Revelstoke. It's hip, it's cool. It's been a part of destination marketing. And it has my vote, I would support that. But this broader plan concerns me a lot. My opinion, it's about timing. Several people have mentioned timing, and to me, the timing is wrong. And I think the last person said it much more relevantly than I will, so in my seven minutes, I'll keep it short. But if this was 10 years from now, would I have a concern? Probably not. But we haven't reached critical mass yet for the resort. And Mr. Ellis is clearly a very intelligent man. And I don't know, I'd like to get to know you at some point. But in this case, when you buy a piece of land, you know what you're buying and you know the risks associated with that. So if you buy something that is zoned and your development requires rezoning, you know that that is a risk. And in this age, I think that's what unfortunately he's facing. Fundamentally, RMR needs to succeed for Mr. Evans' proposal to succeed. In my mind, that's the fundamental issue here. And anything that slows that down is actually taking momentum away from his proposed development. We can build everything, but the building they will come is no longer the way the world works in resort towns. Resort, if RMR's steady rates, there's no success in a number of issues, including Mr. Evans's. Resort development requires government approval. I've been in the ski industry for almost 30 years. If I don't have the traditional government, he just will, well, and in some cases, federal government when it comes to wildlife issues, etc. If they change every political cycle, if the history isn't carried forward from council to council, I'm out of business in a heartbeat. But it requires phenomenal amount of capital investment. And you need to have that confidence that you can actually truly sign something that requires a 20-year buildout and four years later, the election cycle isn't going to compromise that. And it's absolutely critical that that investment confidence remains. There's a serious recession. None of that was in any of the higher level plans. And all of us know that. And just now, the economy is starting to improve, at least in DC. Maybe not so much for use of us. From my perspective, again, with no affiliations, looking outside in, I feel that Northland's has carried us through by challenging economic time. And just as things start to become rosy, we're adding, in my opinion, unnecessary uncertainty. And uncertainty in any investment strategy is a very negative thing. So just as we're starting to see a little bit of a boom, first, I feel, well, let's let them take advantage of the Canadian dollar versus the US dollar and some real estate and the fact that Revelstoke has become a more attractive destination. Let's see what happens over the next two to three years. Well, we have one cool hotel that we've approved with the trees, which also adds to that. There's been some positive momentum. I think there's been some great management changes. I think there's been, you know, the roller coaster, etc. Yeah, I think right now, the timing, I get back to that, is the key. To put anything in the way of that, right as we're starting to see that momentum, which is real concerning. Partnership, last thing, I think, it's come up several times. I wasn't part of those conversations. I worked for Revelstoke pretty much the time that the ski hill was just starting into its modern shape and form. But it seemed pretty clear that there was a partnership leading into that. And to me, fundamentally, this feels, and more, it feels like we're turning our back... we're turning our backs on that right as the most exciting time is here. So I'm not suggesting we shouldn't be supporting Mr. Evans. I feel the timing is off. Today, I believe approving the full 18 acre is a mistake. And I think it's important for us to honor our previous commitments. And I know, I feel confident that RMR knows how important it is, because council's in the future, can't dwell development forever. So it's only going to happen again, et cetera. So I want us to have to keep that moving forward. And I believe Mr. Evans, revisiting the rezoning as part of a broader conversation of rezoning and creating a whole boundaries around resort development, which ultimately is a real issue there. Thank you very much.
Just want to remind everybody again that there is a speakers list that's, you can add your name onto and back. I'm coming to the end of this one here shortly. And I'm not sure if there's anybody signed up in the back. I will be, again, going up to the people present three times for comments. And the next person on the list is Richard
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen of Revelstoke. My name is Richard Tucker. I live at 10-2465 Monastery Court, which is up on the resort. I have, my background is in development. I've been in development for over 40 years. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture and a master's in business administration. The mayor and members of council obviously have a tough decision in front of them this evening. And it's not one that I would like to take on myself, because there's a lot of good information on both sides, and there's a lot of good points that Glory's and Northland's brought forward, a lot of good points on their side of the equation. And they have certainly contributed a huge amount to this community. And I wish them every success, and I hope they do tremendously well, because I don't think that would be great for the entire community. This is interesting, and it's a development that brings a lot of issues to the surface well beyond issues of density and zoning and unusual things, but is it compliant with official plans or not? And is it appropriate density and appropriate good form? So to me, it kind of brings up a whole question about how is this community going to move forward? We all know there's been a lot of issues. There was a global financial crisis, which obviously is very difficult, and the Glory's were key in seeing that through and ensuring that this community succeeded. There's, so before us, there's kind of a stark choice in looking at this problem. There's one of the status quo, obviously very credible, Northland and Glory Group, who have contributed a huge amount to this community and invested a huge amount. There's also the Revelstoke Accommodation Association, who says that there is more than enough hotel accommodation in this town, and it doesn't need anymore. So these are obviously the important voices in what's in the U.S. community. The belief from that group is that the future of Revelstoke is somewhat limited in the near term, and that there is not sufficient demand or prospect of future demand to support more development in the area of the resort. That is something that I don't think any of us can really know what the actual answer is to that question. Is there enough demand out there? A lot of us here would say, "Yeah, there's huge demand. It's a great resort, great place for people to come to." On the other hand, there might be some of us who say, "Hey, it's hard to get here. There's, you know, issues with transportation. A lot of times, things are closed. It's hard to get here. So there's a constraint on development." So who knows what the right answer is to that question? Obviously, we've talked a lot about partnership and, you know, what rights do the Glory's and Northland have, because they were the first mover in this development. And they do have a huge first mover advantage. They control the list. Their property is at the bottom of the list. It is the first place that people will naturally come to when they come to this resort. And they will always have that advantage, whether this development goes forward or not. And they have a lot of control in their hands. And I know they're well capitalized, and they're good managers, and I know they do a good job. So on the other hand, we have Mr. Evans, who's brought forward a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of creativity with his proposal. And he's trying to bring another aspect to the growth of this city. So will he be as big as Northland's and the Glory Group? Never. He will never be that big. And he will never have the advantages that they possess in terms of controlling the overall development and controlling the base of the list. So how is this going to all turn out? I have no idea how this thing's going to go. I know I voted myself, I built a house here, and I hope to retire here. But how's it going to turn out? I don't know. I'm looking forward to seeing how it'll turn. And I certainly hope that the Glory's are very successful, because that will help me too. So I'm very hopeful that they will be successful. I also hope that David Evans will be successful, because he has some energy and some property that I think can add to what the core development has to offer. So at the end of the day, is it something that we should sit here and say that, no, David Evans should have no opportunity to develop his land in a way that's consistent with the official plan of the city and with the policies of the city? Do we want to see 800 units? Probably not. I don't think that's appropriate. But some level of development probably is. So at the end of the day, I voted, I lived here, I've invested here, way less than the Glory's have invested, a small tad of that. And it really lies with city council and our elected representatives to make the best decision for the city of Revelstoke and allow us to move forward as a community and grow and have sustainable development for all. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, it's Stephen Cross. I live at 1550 rail road. Most of you know me from helping lead the anti-mall fight on the highway last fall. And at that time, I was accused of being against development by some in the community, which isn't true. I always said I was for development. It had to be the right development. And I'm here today to say that I think David and Shelley Evans' proposal is the right development. There's been a lot said tonight. I mean, as a business owner downtown, I could be threatened, feel threatened by this proposed development. We're not. As a P&amp;D licensed P&amp;D owner in Arrow Heights, I could feel that it might hurt my occupancy rates. If it does, so is it. But I think we can do a fine job of what we do, and I don't think it's going to impact that. So in my small business world, I don't think it's, you know, I'm not that worried about it. What I've been interested in here tonight, and I can't, I'm a relative newcomer, right? So maybe I don't even have the right to speak. But what I do hear is this. A lot of people talk about the past. The past is really important, I think. We have to honor the past. We have to respect the past. But the past is the past. What's important is the intent that was done, for example, the OCP. The fathers that wrote the constitution, this is my favorite example, wrote the Great Bear Arms. Does anybody in this room think they meant it to be the way the US interprets it today in the broader population? The intent of the OCP was to make sure that Revelstoke stayed vibrant, respected its past, and I think this development does. Then we get, interestingly enough, in my point of view, to the present. And this is a big issue for us today. You guys know we want development. I just, again, I don't know the players, and I respect hugely what Northland's has done with RMR. My wife and I moved here because of the ski resort largely. So we respect that incredibly. We think they do a fine job. I just don't get the panic and fear they're exhibiting when they are the first mover, the gatekeeper, and have way more resources than anybody else. I don't understand that. I do teach strategy in business. I am on staff at Beach University in Kingston. I do hold an MBA from Queens. And from a strategic perspective, I just don't get those statements. I find it very hard to believe that any hotel currently in town, or the Northland's, RMR properties, would have anything to fear from this development. You guys have all the time in the world to take advantage. And that brings us to the future. And a lot of people said it better than I did, but my, but, you know, the future, I mean, David and Shelley Evans' proposal has given five-year moratorium, I believe. That they're giving RMR a chance to do something to get a head start. If that's not enough to show good faith, plus the fact that they live here, I don't know what is. So it is a tough decision, and really, that's it. I'm done. Thanks.
Yeah, just want a little history. When I first come to town, your grandpa, John Heath Baker, they cut the ribbon just ahead of us, I think, a week or so. That's how long the Glory's have grown. And also, I want to welcome the Glory's to visit Revelstoke. We don't see much of it. I'd like to see, we don't often see a billionaire come to Revelstoke, or maybe there is a bunch of billionaires here, they don't come out forwards like that. Warren Buffett was here a year ago. He stopped it with me. But anyhow, this issue that we're going to discuss here tonight, we're in the construction industry. Everybody's saying all this ski hills, wonderful, bringing work, gears in the community, bringing people in and so on. And it's true, you spend the money and you bring it for your own interest, no doubt about it. You want the ski hill to grow and attract more people, right? What about the construction people? And the people that sell shoes downtown and footwork, concrete? You got to get that going again. And that's what keeps the high-paying jobs in town, and they can afford to buy shoes and passes and so on. So it's very important that we have a equal balance. And I can understand hotel owners, they're going to say, "No, because why would he want another hotel?" But that Bob Heath likes the hotel, as he said, "He didn't want the shopping center." He'd rather go with the hotel business. But anyhow, I'm glad that you have improved the business. And Neilson, he does a heck of a job on the hills. That's a trouble. We become friends here. Sometimes we want to, should get more critical. And I'm a little bit disappointed in the Glory family. You could come and mix with us, walk down the street, drop the buck for the kids, and do a lot of stuff like that. And I've never seen that. You know, just open up a little bit to the youth and so on. And that'll help you. And it's all right to have a fence with order come in, and you can make it sound like you guys are the great guys, and we're all jerks. Well, I come here when they open the highway up, and I'm still here, and Revelstoke is prospering. Our slow week, sometimes we see the council come and go and so on. And like Freddie Hughes here, he started skiing in 1949 with a homemade car out of a two-by-four. And I don't know if he had ten on the, oh, to rule out however he did it, but he's teeth. I think he first started skiing behind a horse. He was a little bit at that time. But anyhow, I want to count on the city staff to help us guide us. It's so important that we bring industry here, get the concrete rollers, building inspectors, and stuff like that. It's not all about just be worried about hotel opening up. And then we need rooms for the workers and so on while they're working. It just, it will work out. And we need you guys. You know, Tom, I'd like to see you out there, drop the buck for the kids, you know? I'm joking, this is what you got. Like Neilson, you're doing a good job. Like, we got to have more of that. Have that respect when you come into town. Man, let's get this thing done. Anyhow, thank
I'll put you down as a definite maybe, Peter. Next, this is Johnman Vanei.
Mayor, council. My name is Johnman Vanei, and I live at 1416 30th Street, Lower Farwell. I moved to town in 2008 for the ski hill. It's a big part of the community. But more so, I've got a background in design. I own a small business in town. And I see the development at the Treehouse Hotel as a, like I think, the community. Looking back at the start of the resort, the original equipment to the community, the original plan, the original idea that we are going to be a destination for your visiting market. After 2008 recession, everything changed. We didn't hope it would happen. The Glory's came in, and they had lights on, set. One thing that wasn't foreseen was the change in the market. We didn't foresee seeing people coming from Calgary, driving a long distance for the quality of product in town, but it happened. The market, the hills changed. The hills seem that they're starting to develop the tight coaster, the family element, to bring in elements to keep this slather community alive. With David's project, I think it's another thing to keep the city going. Revelstoke will be successful, and is successful, but it's going to be more successful if we have all elements. We've got outdoor biking on the Mount Kearsen trails, frisbee, we've got rock climbing, we've got fishing. We've got this ski hill and the plate boats. The treehouse development is just one more thing that's going to keep the town growing. It's not just a place that you're going to go and stay while with the other elements. Something's going to draw the community members to the community. It's a destination. We have something to really respect. I want to look out at Mount Baybee, up down the valley, the mountains, that'll grow our trees. To have a pod, nest in the bush, looking out and taking that in. I don't think there's anything more romantic than sitting with them and enjoying a glass of wine, looking out at everything that Revelstoke does offer. I think with the design process, social and cultural ideologies, you know, it's really important. The community is founded on knowing your neighbor, about getting coffee, small businesses. And Revelstoke, the railroad, forestry, those are large industries that let the small businesses grow. But we're definitely seeing a trend towards tourism. And I don't think it's just Revelstoke Mountain Resort that provides tourism. As things have changed with what the resort was initially planned for, with the European market, to now how it's accommodating people from long distances, so that Calgary, Vancouver, Calumna, and Amity. I think the planning process has to change. The binocular of Revelstoke is diversity. We're looking at, you know, heritage homes, modern homes. We're looking at the development of the railroad communities and communities that were built with the support of the dam during their construction. I think something like this is just only going to add to the value of the community. We've got hotels. We've got Best Western Plus. We've got Sutton Place. We've got the Gippos. We don't have the treehouse. It's something that we're not thinking.
Hi, my name's Jason Rowe. I live at 2070 Upper Road in Revelstoke since 2005. I saw my interview here today, my third time. I have experience in adding unit applications and having difficulties to follow those changes and what comes with those changes. So I speak here tonight with some experience. But I've heard a reoccurring theme besides the 18s, and that is desire to approve a treehouse hotel. The issue with this zone is the blanket hotel zoning on 18 acres. I believe the simple solution is to revise the zoning specifically to include the treehouse, but remove the blanket. I believe the simple solution is to revise the zone specifically include the treehouse, but remove the blanket hotel zoning. If it's just a treehouse development, as it has stayed here tonight and improved by not only the resort and the idea of treehouse hotel, but a lot of people here, then we end up having a win-win-win. The community wins, the resort wins, and the developer wins. But a treehouse house, hotel is what they're planning and nothing else. 18 acres of hotel blanket zoning is not necessary. We can specifically speak to a treehouse hotel and everyone in the community would win. I give you.
Lou Hendricks.
Thank you, mayor and council. Welcome to Revelstoke and the Glarities. Last time I saw you, Revelstoke was in Corcoran.
I'm glad that Robert brought up the $25 million debt.
Robert, while the $25 million debt, I'm still waiting for some of that money. So here's hoping. You know, the Glarities, Northland properties have all the advantages in the world to build whatever they want in this town. I mean, they have the money, they have the construction company, they have the resources. They have treated the people in town, courting, the contractors, suppliers, the subgraves. You know, they used their power and wealth to bully people into taking 70, 60 cents on the dollar. Nobody had a choice. So I find it rather ironic right now that the big, powerful conglomerate is here asking for mercy to the city to do development. I mean, if David's willing to put the money in, do the development, what's wrong with that? I mean, if anybody thinks he's going to be able to build 800 rooms, that's slightly delusional. That would take longer than anybody in this room would lie. So I would say that maybe if the Glarities paid the apartment out there, they might be able to get more rooms. I was in Catmore today golfing with some people and they were complaining. They love Revelstoke, but they hate coming here in the summer because they can't get a hotel for less than $200, $25 a night. Do we need more rooms? Maybe. Thank you.
Next up is George Beeler.
You're a big marketer. My name is George Beeler. If you ever hear a call and I've been at Revelstoke since 1959. And seen a lot of things happen and come and go and the resort up and down. Start calling, remember the original guys, Don Sandler, Little Cat up there, Seattle. And I wish the ski resort well. I mean, they do what they do. And I wish them well. And I also, at this time, I would like to remind the council. And a year ago, when you ran for public office and I was there, there was a promise to me. And I made them as well as you guys made them. And these promises, and I'm going to read them off, a little bit. You promised to make Revelstoke a friendlier place to do business. And I looked back in the papers, it was right there. You promised to help investors by reducing their rent pay and make them to achieve their, let them achieve their goals. Check the paper. There was several items, several people made that. You promised to create an economic tax base for Revelstoke. So Revelstoke is enjoying a lower tax base. So it's all about paying too much taxes. You promised to give a lot of minorities the freedom to invest into Revelstoke. Now I agree, this whole thing, Freddie Bruski said, this is all about Revelstoke. Never mind anything else. This is all Revelstoke. And I agree. At one point, I agree. I don't agree with the rest of them. I agree with that point. And I think that Revelstoke, at this point in time, needs out of the loop. And we need to move forward. And today, some of those promises haven't been met. And I'm hoping that tonight, that you can make those promises and complete them. And assure us that you are on, that's what we're going for. So remember that. And that's only, that's only in less than a year we've wanted for that. Development that is before you is innovative, unique, functional, and will put Revelstoke on the map because it will be the only one in the country that I know of, I'm aware of, right? That I don't know of any other town, especially small towns, got a treehouse hotel. It posts on the map. People will say, oh, a treehouse hotel in Revelstoke. Can you imagine? You know, and they'll come here just to look at you. They don't say it. And I believe that the design, the location where it is, is the perfect place for it. I can't think of any other place in that place for that particular hotel. And if the Glarities, it's either out in big numbers here tonight, must be awfully worried about this whole thing. I can't even imagine they would have seven, ten, seven, eight head weeks to tell us a story. And I agree with the last speaker that sometimes Revelstoke ends up being treated very well. I have a friend of mine, a very good friend of mine, lost everything. Put out, did a whole bunch of work in the condos and never got anything. And anyway, now they're asking for something here. And I don't believe that they deserve it. I believe firmly in competition. There needs to be competition for everything. I was a contractor. I was in competition for every single job and every dime I ever made. I had to compete for it. And I didn't learn. That was what I did. Now, I think that this particular project needs to have serious consideration. Because if we turn this debt now, where do we go next? What's the next thing we're going to do? What are we going to do after this when you turn this debt? And what kind of precedent does it set? That's something you have to think of. You got to do it if you make this decision tonight in that direction. And you guys are going to think about it. Now keep reminding me. Thank you.
I'm at the end of the speakers list and what I would, I have to make a decision here. We are going to keep going on or reconvene this public area another time. What the question I'd like to ask is that if you are interested, thinking about, or definitely want to come to the microphone, could you raise your hand? If you're thinking about it, I'm not saying come. I'm just saying put your hand up so I can make a decision to carry on. Okay. All right. So I think that what we'll do is, I am in need of taking about a three-minute break. They already can stand up and they can do the seven-minute stretch. And we're going to take just a couple of minute break and then we're going to carry on.